I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for picking up the hat.
We appreciate everybody being here. We know there's quite an issue to discuss and we'll have a change in agenda, so it's going to happen right after that. I think it'd be much, much more user-friendly for you and you'll be able to get those points as you want made on record then rather than wait till the very end of the meeting for public comment. That's just too, too long to wait. We have a full council. All of our council members are here. We didn't have anybody except Noah Hong, our fire chief, who will be here tonight. We don't have on our agenda a public hearing. We will go to the agenda now and the agenda needs to be... The agenda and the consent agenda needs to be adopted. And so if somebody can make a proposal.
I have a question, Mayor.
No.
I cannot find this online over the weekend. I just want to make sure that the agenda was posted as required before we move on with the meeting, otherwise I would request that we postpone this meeting and move it back to meet that requirement.
I think it was posted. I thought so.
I did see it today.
It was posted out.
But I don't know when it was posted.
Because it was not posted last year. So I just want to make sure that it was posted in public places where it needed to be.
Yeah, and we had it here as well, in the hallway and outside. So I think, I think we're clear on that. Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I have a question. The consent agenda involves all of these, correct? Ooh, minutes, questions, payroll, other?
Right.
Well, I have some serious reservations as far as protocol, council protocol during the meetings. And I will bring those up later. I would be glad to meet with you
Sure.
in your chambers. The sooner the better and discuss these. I've got two instances that I would like to talk to you about.
Okay, we can certainly.
About council conduct and protocol.
Okay. I think that came out of a recent train to... That's something I was prepared to talk about as well, so it's gonna be okay. Do we have a proposal to adopt the agenda and the consent agenda?
So moved, Mayor.
We have a second.
A second, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. It's been moved and seconded to adopt the agenda and consent agenda for this session, for the session of the Goldendale City Council for February 22nd, 2022. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, one day is new.
I want to make sure that Steve and you get a date on the calendar and resolve that because this is something you do every time about your reservations and never get to solving them.
I love you.
And so rather than speaking to that, to the full council, if you feel like you need to do that on the side, that's great, but let's go ahead and get her to dress so it doesn't keep coming up. So we can just get right to business.
Okay, I would tonight, except there's a whole lot of folks here that have got some discussion about a very serious issue also.
A lot of woods that should have already happened, so just before the next meeting would be great.
Okay, not a problem. No, and I would, I would just soon discuss this in open meeting.
Well, that's exactly the move I'm making, is to amend the order of the meeting to put Steve Johnson's presentation on library issues as a presentation rather than as council business. Under council business, there isn't public discourse. So we've moved it up to where you can give your views. You don't have to wait till the end of the meeting for public comment unless you want to. But I think that will, will help you to get that done. If you're all in favor of that change, just a nod will let me know when there are any objections.
Yeah, sounds good.
Here we go. Well then, under presentations, we'll talk, have Steve Johnson present his remarks on library issues. Part of what I had not given Steve the information, but an update I got this afternoon, was that the regional library in Vancouver had pulled all those books back in. And quite honestly, I think the one that was in, that got such a reaction was in the little kids' part of the library. It should have been where the teenagers were. But that's, that's more of a mistake, not a, not a policy. But that's just what I'd given, been given as an update. So we'll have to see, but I think they already know a lot of what you want to say, but at the same time, you have a very right to say it. So with that, Steve, I'll turn it over to you.
Well, considering everything that's happened in your favor, our favor, what I've got to say is there'll be probably an upshot of tirade.
Recording in progress.
The library issue is directly related to public education. It's an honor of our public education system, which is owned and controlled by the liberal state and teachers' unions. There is a systematic assault by a radical left-wing progressive socialist Marxist fascist element in this country with the full support of large corporations and the liberal mainstream and social media to erode and destroy our traditional values, morals, constitutional rights, and God-given liberties. And it's given rise to an army of what I, and not just myself, I've heard this expression used before, petty tyrants, which are elected and unelected officials who embrace and even revel in this recently gifted cloak of authoritarianism. They're well represented in, but not limited to, the education and healthcare systems. And these people are just the pawns that do the bidding and the dirty work for the ruling elite. And with that, I would like to invite Olga Hodges to come up and give her testimony about her personal experience relative to what I've just mentioned. The account that she's going to give is not an isolated one. There's been numerous concerns expressed about the pervasive nature of some of the material in our library. And apparently, our voices have been heard. Your voices have been heard. You've done a great job. Anyway, with that, Olga, if you would.
So before you speak, if you could just say your name clearly so we can get it on the record.
There's some material to share. I'm sorry for that material. It is very graphic. Is this where I stand?
Yep.
Okay. Alright, guys. First, I want to say thank you for having me here. I haven't done anything like this since student government in college, so I'm a little nervous. My name is Olga Hodges. My first name is Olga because I was born in the former Soviet Union. My family came to America when I was five to escape religious persecution. So I'm an immigrant and a refugee. And I'm a mother. My background is in public health. I used to work for Multnomah County. As a health educator, project manager. My last name is Hodges because I'm married to Mr. Michael Hodges, who's a local businessman. So we contribute to this community and we love this community and we are so grateful to be here. So that's who I am. And I just want to share with you something that recently happened. And I just want to be clear before I share any of this. I am not proposing that we censor or burn books. I am trying to talk to you about age-appropriate displaying of books and maybe even bringing in some better material for our young people and for our children. So on February 8th, I was in the library with my three children and I was actually there to print something out. And so after a quick walk through the little children's section, because that's the age for my children, you know, I saw the typical stuff that kind of rubbed me the wrong way. Was not really happy with it. The first book I saw was about talking to your children about white privilege. I'm thinking, what does my six-year-old need to know about that? Underneath that, I saw a book about tarot reading. I think, gosh, it's not Halloween. Why is that out? And you know, I didn't really see very many classic books. Nothing really edifying. Maybe I missed it. Maybe it'd all been taken out. But the selection was disappointing. And to me, it felt very intrusive to my values as a parent. And it felt really inappropriate. I didn't feel like that was appropriate things to be shown to a child or offered to children. And then we went upstairs because we had to print something out. We were directed to go upstairs to print something out. So again, I wasn't out on a witch hunt. I wasn't cherry-picking for offensive content. That's not what I'm out to do. I'm not trying to embarrass my kids or myself. And just before I turned my back to print something off, this book catches my eye in the 12- to 18-year-old section. That's where we were. And I'm thinking, huh, I better check that out before one of my kids grabs it. And I actually have the book here. And let me grab it real quick, actually, to get you... I brought, I brought a bunch of materials, including samples for you all to review. So I grabbed this book real quick and I look and there's a mature rating on here. And I'm thinking, okay, that's interesting. The first thing I opened up to, and there are two minors engaged in sex naked. I'm thinking, wow, that's pretty inappropriate. This isn't in the right place. I assume it was a mistake. Sometimes books get put in the wrong area. Sometimes a cookbook gets put in the geography section. Mistakes happen. So I went downstairs and kind of talked through the chain of command before I had a chance to talk to Ms. Tara McLeod, who is also here listening. And I, again, I assumed it was a mistake. I assumed they wouldn't put stuff like this out. This was on display for kids to grab and see. Thinking, gosh, if 12-year-olds saw this, I mean, yeah, they can go on the internet and see whatever, but most of the families I know have really strict rules around that. They really are trying to guide their children away from that. And they really assume that the library is like a safe place for that age. I wouldn't let my six-year-old wander around the library, but 12, 13, after school, oftentimes, they go there. So I bring it downstairs. I bring it to their attention and I say, you know, this doesn't seem appropriate. In my opinion, I called it pornography. It's pornographic content. I have the definition of pornography that I'll share with you in a moment. And it kind of escalated from there. I was frustrated that I actually had to push at, you know, this probably shouldn't be up in the kids' area. The librarian unfortunately went on to say, that's just your opinion. I've personally read that series. I think it's great. I think it's fine. Again, it was up for grabs. It wasn't just tucked in. And so here I am, thinking, gosh, how do I... This seems so common sense. This seems so obvious. She offered me a form, which I later did accept. But I was kind of frustrated because, you know, I was like, this should probably just at least come down for you guys to at least review. Nope, firm resistance, pushiness. And then ultimately, she called the police on me and my children and I were escorted out by a policeman. Now, when I mentioned going to the library, my kids said, but Mom, aren't we going to get arrested? Aren't we going to get in trouble? So that's a bummer. I have to explain that.
That's real sad.
Yeah. The good news is, the officer gave me a really good pep talk once we walked out. Because of course, by then, I was in tears. I was intimidated by the officer. He turned out to be really nice and encouraged me. And, you know, I won't say too much just for protection of his privacy, but he inspired me to take another step. That's why I'm here. That's why we did take extra steps. And there was a big response from the community. And I'll tell you more about that, but let me just share a few things that have happened. So I took that form. I filled it out. And I submitted it about a week later with 70 other signatures along with my own, including Sheriff and Mrs. Bob Songer. They're on there. They attended our meeting. They're concerned about what's being offered to our youth. Okay? There's a process that that's going to go through. I understand. But at the same time, there was an email to the Director of Fort Vancouver Libraries, Amelia. And she sent this letter that, you know, was both oops and thank you and a warning. And this is where I'm kind of stuck. And this is where, I don't know where to go forward. Okay, so, yes, according to the publisher, the publisher agrees, this is 18-plus. This was indeed in the wrong area. It should have been somewhere else. We'll review it and we'll probably move it to the adult section. We are grateful and thank you to the parent that brought this to our attention. Next paragraph. I want to remind you, it's not the library's job to parent the kids in the library. They can go any section. They can grab whatever they want. We're not going to limit their free speech and, and all that stuff. I get that. I get that. But then it's like, okay, so you want me to do my job, taking care of my kids in the library, watching where they go? Because it's not your job. But when I do my job, you call the police on me? So I'm kind of stuck. I can say that's not okay and I bring it to your attention and you call the police on me. And the content stayed up. The book stayed up. When we went back a few days later, the book was still there. I didn't go back because I also got banned from the library. For a month, I'm not allowed to go. Okay, I understand Tara. I might have scared her. I might have been a little upset. But you know, when it involves kids and kids that I care about in this community, really good, good kids, really smart kids that don't go down to this level of degeneracy, I get upset. It's also upsetting that the content in here and in the other books, which I printed out for you, depict things like child pornography, sex with minors, depict things like torture, child sacrifice, blatant explicit sexuality, explicit nudity, fetishism, things that make my skin crawl, unfortunately. And to think about a child seeing that is really kind of disturbing. Satanic rituals. I mean, and that was just from a quick grab. And this comprises about two-thirds of the young adult section. This isn't just like a tiny little area. This is like the main thing that I saw up there. That's disappointing. I think we should expect more and want more for our young people. Okay, this is a Carnegie library. It doesn't seem that way now. You would find better content, better materials at a secondhand store selling books for a dollar. I'm sorry. We could do a lot better. And I want to tell you too, that the laws in the country where this comes from, in Japan, are different from our laws. Their age of consent is 13 years old. Sexualizing young people is okay in that country. They only just banned child pornography in 2014. They were the last country to really do that, that's as developed as we are. Okay, so that's the influence there. That's why this stuff is okay in here. It's, it's really shocking and I'm sorry that you have to see that. At the last meeting, when we organized some people to come out and about 50 people came out, there were people that were disturbed and so triggered from their own experiences, they had to walk out. That broke my heart. That matters to me. It's not a witch hunt. This is about real people. When kids see this, they don't have the tools or the guidance or the impulse to really know what to do with it. Some do, okay? But others, this is harmful. I think it's kind of abusive. To show them children's heads being ripped off, children being formed into robots and sex slaves, that's in there. I'm not making this up. Okay, this is, this is for you to review on your own. And so I have the definition of pornography for you. Do you guys want me to read that?
Sure.
Would that be helpful? So from the Cornell Law School, pornography is material that depicts nudity or sexual acts for the purpose of sexual stimulation. This can come in the form of videos, photographs, written material, audio recordings, animation, among other media formats. And it is also illegal, further down, to knowingly distribute pornography to minors. Okay? And it goes on to give you a little bit more detail about that. But here's the thing, we can play, you know, word karate about, well, is this really explicit? Can't see genitalia. Maybe that's okay, dah, dah, dah. At some point in our community, we kind of have to draw a line. Because laws about obscenity and censorship are different in libraries than they are in any other institution. Okay, that's something that most of us didn't know before. I'm grateful that we know that now. The library isn't really a place just to kind of run around and roam and play anymore. It's actually a place I have to be extra, extra careful. And not because I'm close-minded, not because I blush at things like that. But because if one of you took a book out like this and showed it to my kid, I would be calling the police on you for grooming, for abuse, for absolutely inappropriate content. Okay, and I get it. I brought it up to them and they say, all of these things are reviewed through, you know, a big committee. All of this has been approved. We're not in charge. We've got nothing we can do about it. That's not what I've ever seen in Goldendale before. I've never, I really think that we should have a little more accountability and involvement. And we shouldn't just be doing this when a parent has a concern. I don't know how many other kids have been exposed to this, how many parents have brought this home and been shocked. I've been hearing stories for about a year. Parents bringing home books where they think they're reading one thing and it's introducing the idea of being transgender to their four-year-old. Or, you know, things that are just not in their family values. I don't have to be specific about those things, but people are allowed to have their family values. And you know, the library sadly just doesn't match a lot of the values of this community. I'm not trying to be a bigot. Again, it's not a witch hunt. It's not about censoring. But we can do a lot better. We can have things offered to our children that actually elevate them, especially during the pandemic, with as much has been taken away from them, with how limited things have been. They've been the last that anybody worries about them. Our library has offered very little support. I'm sad to say that. Our, our library should have been a haven, even if they can't congregate there because it's so, you know... There should have been something and there just wasn't. So let me see if there's anything else I really need to tell you guys, but... I want to mention one more thing. When that letter came from the boss of the bosses that said, we're going to check it out, what was done instead really just kind of, I thought was in bad taste. Instead of taking down the content, they took down the sign that showed the age that was allowed to be there. That was kind of intentional, I think, and I'm really disappointed. Because what that did was take out the parameters that protect children and make it a free-for-all because apparently that's what the library is. But I disagree. I think the library should be curated in a way that is age-appropriate. The books have their special areas. I think the content should be a little safer. It would be great if parents could have some sort of buy-in. I don't even know what we can ask for. But, you know, we need to do better.
Oh, I, I know we can't answer it tonight, but I think in working with the local library, we may be able to do a committee of parents that try to keep ahead of this. I think that's the fairest way to do it.
Awesome.
It gets very tricky in our country because of freedom of speech.
Yeah.
I was looking at that. I've been told it was cartoons. And I was looking, thinking, I was going to look at Donald Duck. It's way beyond anything Disney ever thought about.
Yeah.
These are tense times, both for parents and for children. Terribly tense for young children.
Yeah.
And something like this, really, they don't need that in the mix at all.
Yeah, they don't. And it would be, I guess it would be okay if it was a small section. But again, this is about two-thirds of the young adult section. And there's a difference between a 12-year-old and an 18-year-old. The really intense stuff that you're seeing in your collection is actually rated lower. It's for 16-plus. This editor or this publisher had the, you know, courage to actually give it a better rating that this stuff is a lot less mild, is a lot more mild than some of the other stuff they saw. That other stuff is actually traumatic to see. It is traumatic and it is sad. So, yeah, you know, what, what if we had some books out that taught kids about freedom of speech? Or local history? Or some of them are in foreage, some of them are doing this. What if we had stuff that reflected our community? We have a really incredible native culture here. I didn't see anything of that.
Well, Goldendale itself has a lot of very interesting history.
Yeah.
Good history.
Yes.
That help our children understand.
Yes, it would be really great if we had some of that available. Because we are a small town. We are limited on certain resources. I get it. Getting books from Fort Vancouver is awesome to have that access. And from what I understand, that's the most common way that people are interacting with the library is they order online. It goes there and they pick it up. But the stuff in the actual library doesn't seem to get utilized very much. And some of that is because parents have been so upset about the things that they have seen there. They don't feel like it's a great place for their kids to be in. You know? And that's, we can change that. We can make that better. I think we could partner together. I don't think their intentions are bad. I think they're just misplaced.
And I think the step of bringing it into the public this way rather than a lot of other ways it might have come out will help it to get the attention I think it needs for the sake of those youngest children, if all there is to it.
Yeah. And I, and I do want to mention that I did invite my, my friend, Mrs. Kramer, because there is a emotional and psychological and in my opinion, spiritual pain and trauma and influence that can come from stuff like this. She is an experienced social worker, counselor, many more things. I'd really love it if she could share some of that with you because this could easily get me placed in, you know, fanatic homeschool mom, religious crazy person, you know. You should, you should see the comments I'm getting. I recorded the incident with Ms. McLeod. It's had 4,000 views in two weeks. And I can tell you, it's not in my favor. And that's okay. That's okay. Because I value free speech, people's response. And people think I'm harassing her. Or something that actually did end up being in the wrong place.
Yep.
And, you know, might have some legal implications there, but...
Mayor, I think we'd like to see this go one step further besides, beyond just a, you know, if it came to be a local fair and review. And that is some opportunity to have some input on the staff there and how they conduct themselves. Because I've experienced hostility and, you know, I know the last two years have been very difficult. But I have experienced hostility from the same individual over, you know, minor things, simple questions. And I've heard others that have had similar experiences. And so I think that if, you know, if we need to legal review or just work at the, look at the documentation for the arrangement of the library being here but see if we can't bring more local input to the overall management of the library. And then additionally, I'm curious to know if the police officer lets you go for what reason you were being removed from the library?
For trespassing.
I was complaining to the library.
Yeah, yeah.
Trespassing.
She, she did ask me to leave and I said, no. I said, leave me alone. I said, I want you to take that down. She wanted to take the form. I didn't. I did, I, I put up a little bit, but I, you know, you can see the video for yourself. I didn't, I didn't get too crazy. I just was really surprised and shocked. But I can tell you, the amount of people I've heard say, we're done with the library. If I had a dollar for every person that has told me, we're done with the library. I do have a new pair of boots right now, honestly.
That's, that's reasonable.
I just want to explain a little something about the call. By when, yes, it is a public building. The building is owned by the city. But the library or Fort Vancouver has dominion and control of this building. So under the circumstances, when someone is, when you're told to leave and you refuse to, whatever their reason is, whether it be Holcombe's Market, the library, somebody's home, or a business downtown, you got to leave. When you don't leave, then it becomes an issue of trespassing. Now, is that something where you're going to get arrested every single time? No, so the officer responded, found out what was going on, was told that she was asked to leave and she refused because she wanted to get her point across. Got an officer explaining, once you're told you got to leave, you got to leave. And that's the reason she was escorted out, but the officer said, please leave. And she complied. Officer explained it to her. According to his report, she was very polite to the police officer and she voluntarily left on her own accord. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah. So I just wanted to make that clear. Yes, it is a public building. But if there's a disturbance or whatever the reason is and the person that has control of that building tells you to leave, you got to leave.
Can I, can I ask you a quick?
Sure.
How many times has an officer been called to escort somebody out?
Of the library?
Yeah.
Oh, I don't know. It doesn't happen very often. A lot of times, it's kids getting unruly and stuff like that, so... But it's not a normal occurrence, no. But it's not a normal occurrence, no.
Yes. Do you have a question or?
Sir, is there, is there a RCW specifically that addresses that?
Corral Trespass? Yes. Give me a minute and I'll get it for you.
Thank you.
Your Honor?
Yes?
I would just like to add that this freedom of speech idea has been distorted and abused terribly by the element that I just mentioned in the opening here. And the content that she's talking about here does not belong in our public education system. When it comes to sexual education, that belongs at home, flat out. We do not need a librarian, or a library, or a school and teachers teaching our kids about sex. It's as simple as that.
At that age, at the young age, yes, especially.
Well, especially at the, and there's that minor, the minor, the minor thing. Technically, once you're 18 years old in this country, you're an adult. So, you pretty much, you've crossed over the line in respect of this. But anybody under 18, and this is who she's referring to, and this is who we're talking about, is children. And it doesn't deserve to be in our education system anywhere, in any way, shape, or form.
Well, I can't, I have to say, this isn't offering educational.
No, that's not.
This isn't educational. This is, this is a type of fantasy entertainment.
Absolutely.
And people can have their preferences. That's fine. I just want to be clear that the rating system differs from what we use in America. The age of consent is different here. It's okay for them in this country to sexualize young people. It's okay for them to depict minors having sex with adults. We have different laws here. So, okay, it slipped through cracks. I get it. I'm not, I'm, you know, she said she loved the series. She read it. Okay, maybe just different type of moral compass or rate or whatever. But I didn't really see any good stuff either.
Right.
I, I think, I, I think that's, that would be nice. Because I can tell you, there are libraries in Maldona County where there are areas for explicit material. There are teen areas where there is a librarian present stationed. There are things that people are allowed to have in the library, but it requires showing your ID, and someone with a key opens it up. If Maldona County can do that, how did that, how does this slip through? I'm telling you, there is more and there's worse. And it hurts my soul to have had to look at that. It hurts my soul to have had to do the research of what this creates in young people. How there is a, a big movement of child pornography and pedophilia that is kind of funneled through this type of stuff. And I'm not saying everybody that likes this stuff is into it. I'm just saying, what are we really protecting? Okay, it's important. It might, you know, I'm, I'm willing to be called certain things. Someone commented, told my husband, "Go hang himself". Someone said, "He feels so bad for my kids", you know, whatever. It's, it's mixed perspectives. But at some point, are you protecting the innocence of children? I'm not talking about them staying naive and sheltered, but there is a time for them to be innocent. There is a time for us to do our job as parents, and the library is supposed to be a resource for us, a support, not an adversary. Not a shocking place. That I hear across the board, people of different faiths, different schooling, public school, private school, homeschool, just saying, you know, it just isn't working out anymore. It's just not good for us. We're buying books instead. So, I'm thinking, well, what good is the library then? But I don't want to lose my library.
No, no.
I used to go there once a week with my kids before COVID. I loved the classes, you know. I loved, I loved the things they offered. I loved that I could suggest books, about natural parenting, for example, and they would order them. It was awesome to be cooperating that way. I'm sorry I came off to Tara as just this, you know, crazy wing nut. I, I like to contribute and interact with the library. I'm not there for, none of us are there to point a finger and, and not like it. And none of us are there also to be on some sort of like liberal mission agenda. We're not, we don't really need that.
But I think it's gonna take involvement by the public, like you've already started, both to work with the, with the library, clear out those things, or at least identify them. So, they have an option to follow something like what you saw in, in Maldona. A lot of those things can happen. I think there's one other person ahead of you. I've, I've got a couple of questions here. Thank you. You're welcome.
Yeah.
Yes.
You just, do you just state your name just so it's loud?
Yes.
My name's Ryan Collier. I'm a father of four. The only thing I did want to mention in regards to some of the statements you made in a broader sense. As a parent, I think this may be consistent with other parents. We're not here to make that point particularly. We're not here to make a political statement. We're here to say, "This is not appropriate", because it sexualizes our children. And you're portraying sexual acts between minors and putting that and making it accessible to minors. It's, I want to keep that laser focus. I don't want to dilute it. I, I want, I don't want anyone to run off the rails with it. That's what this is about. And, yeah, I think if we can keep it there, we can find a lot of common ground.
Thank you.
I have that RCW for the gentleman.
Oh, okay.
You ready? This will be under Title 9A, point 52, point 070. This will cover what this incident was involving because it involves unlawfully in a building. So, that's the chapter that trespasses under is Title 9A 52, okay?
9A 52 dot 070.
070 would be specific to this incident involving her, okay? Good.
Steve?
As the chief, you mentioned a little bit ago, well, and I want to apologize there. My tirade, my political shotgun blast was more, more than necessary. But anyway, as the chief, related to, the city owns that building and the property. And I would like to see the agreement that we have.
I'll have to be right back.
Sure.
There's obvious, obviously some room for negotiating or coming to, to a general consensus regarding this.
No.
We don't want to lose our library. No. But I'll tell you what, if I had McGruders, I'd send Fort Vancouver packing. This community is more than capable of putting their own library together
Sure.
without Fort Vancouver. If they're going to slide this kind of material into these small rural communities unabated, like she commented, down there, you gotta have a passport and an ID and a lock and a key. Here, it's just there, you know? They're running wild with these small community libraries. But anyway, I want to see that agreement. And I think it's, it's gonna be pertinent that we, the city, discuss this with Fort Vancouver in conjunction with any citizen group that wants to form.
Well, I think that's what we need is a, a citizens group. It's something a lot of the, the city can't do a whole lot about, but there's certain things we can do. Particularly to, to help a, a public group meet, discuss, and get the information that they need.
Absolutely.
That's support.
At different levels, like I say. Push comes to shove, here, you know, this element has been pushing, pushing, pushing on our society. And the society has had enough. It's as simple as that. We're at the breaking point. Whether anybody wants to admit it or not, in the beginning, deny it all you want. This country, indeed the world, is coming apart like a cheap soup. But let's see what this agreement is.
Yeah. And I'll be able to get it for you.
Mayor.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I'm about to stand up on the table and shout. A couple of things I'd like to do is, the first thing, I think, we need to change from the people working with the library to the library working with the people. I think there is a, a big difference in the people going up to the librarian and trying to work with them. And maybe getting a little passionate and then escorted out versus the library staff working with the people in an open manner. So, I think there should be a change there. I am all good for, well, before I go to that, there's a couple of questions that I have now based on the definition of pornography and the material that, that was at the library. And I have definite questions now. So, I would like to have maybe our chief follow up with counsel regarding the prosecution and crimes. Is this material in the possession of a normal, typical person? Would that constitute a crime of pornography or possession of pornography or child pornography? And the distribution of said material, would that also constitute a crime? Besides the ratings, whether they are this age or that age. I know for my family, the ratings don't imply as they are told. You know, there's definitely different content that we don't allow. But if, if there is actual law to state the distribution of pornographic material or displaying of a child or anybody, and not an adult, in any sexual way, then that's a whole different matter. And the choice of the library to have this material may not be a choice, and then that ends that. Aside from that, I think parents should have a choice in the material, you know? Definitely don't want my children being taught material that I don't want. But if I, as a parent, look for something that would help me teach something, then that, I would hope that's available. If, if my child decides they don't like their sexuality, or they prefer something else, or identify as something else, well, back in the day, the option was kick them out of the house, right? But that's not for every parent. And some parents may need help in, in that situation. However, all that material should be sectioned off by ages. If you're not looking for that material, you should not be exposed to said material. I think, I, I haven't been to the library in a while. My kids and my wife are there. They're probably there every day you're there. And I have Latif's to prove it. But the choice to put controversial material or inappropriate material on display. So, if, if we're looking at a bookshelf and the book is stuck in there, I mean, you gotta know the Dewey Decimal System to go find a book, but they still use that. But to display it on top of the shelf
As a display.
As a display, that's just bad. It's a bad choice. It's, it's a poor choice. Whether it be sexual content or any other controversial material. You're just asking for someone to be passionate about it, and then you want to call the cops afterwards. It's just, I mean, come on. So, I think staff should make better choices there. We should, we should, we can make recommendations. We can have a, a board. We can have anything. But I think we need to reach out to the library and see what they're willing to work with, give them the benefit that they're gonna work with us. The other thing is, what is it, Ms. Hoggis? You mentioned, and, and we utilize this in my family. We order books. People order books from the library. If, and Dave, help me out here, but
Yes, sir.
You run a store, and if something is not sold, you don't stock it.
Yes, sir.
Right? So, if the community is not checking these books out, why put them on the shelf? For the same thing, sure, have some information available for those that want that material, you know, whether it's teaching or reading or whatever, as long as it is legal. But also controversial material, if you want that, you can order that yourself. So, we can make better choices on what is stocked in our library. You know, if, if the grocery store is not selling, you know, some kind of specialty food, they're not gonna stock it. But certainly you can go up to a manager and say, "Can you order this for me?", and they can work with you. So, why put stuff on the shelves that is not being checked out or that's controversial? And I think that's where the library needs to make better informed decisions. I certainly like the fact that being part of a bigger library system, there's a lot more choices. You know, and we can order material if we choose it. But I think this all, this should all be put on the library system, their management, to work with the community, not us working with them. And then definitely, if we can get some answers, gee, I hate to ask and put more stuff on you, but I mean, if, if this qualifies as beyond inappropriate and too criminal, and if I go check out a book just to see what everybody's talking about and what the big hurrah is about, am I gonna be, you know, punished for a crime for possessing this material?
Touching on what you just said, I was not available for your meeting that was last, last week. But I went to the library today to take a look at this book. And that's Also Cute Series?
Can I get that too?
Yes, yes, absolutely. It's just the volume thirteen.
So, the way it works, these are backwards. So, the beginning of the book is the back.
Okay. All right. Anyways, I went to, so I could see the book for myself, and I talked with the supervisor. I don't think the, the Tara, Tara was there at that time. But I was told that the books have been, Fort Vancouver's order of the books recalled, and they're gonna be, if I'm saying this right, recategorized. What that means, I don't know. So, I wasn't able to look on this. But, but I wanted, my plan was to look at it, you know, and then take some of the material to the prosecutor and say, "What's your opinion?", but I didn't have that opportunity. Now, I've got, is this one from the library or?
That's the one in question.
Okay, all right.
You can borrow, you want to borrow, I trust you.
You're responsible for the tea, you said.
If I can, so I can review it, take it to the prosecutor as the council's requesting to do, just to have a, a, a opinion on it.
Sure, and I have about four others that you might want to see that have worse content and a lower rating.
Okay, and this is the same series?
They're in the same genre. They're the same shelf.
Okay, because the, I was told that the, the series So Cute was the one, this is volume thirteen of?
Yes, yes, that's the specific one.
So, there'll be those, I was told those are being recalled back for re categorization. I don't know about the other books.
Well, there's a, there was a letter, sorry, can I go? There was a letter, there was a letter that I can't, is it public yet? But this is my interpretation of it, so forgive me if it's wrong. I sent in, I wonder if she can even comment. Tara's here, if you want to comment. She sent me, she sent me a response when I submitted my review form with the 70-plus signatures. And it said, basically, you know, it doesn't matter how many people say no. It goes through a process, and it stays up until that process is done. And so, three days, six weeks, eight months, I don't know, but there is typically a lag. Maybe they're jump-starting this, but as far as I know, their policy is we leave it up until people meet like this and review it. So, I don't know.
I was told today that they're, they were being recalled by Fort Vancouver.
That's great. That's great.
Bye.
Mayor?
Yes?
I guess I'd like to make a motion that to support local control of our community, our city staff review the contracts with the library and request legal review to determine the ability of local citizens to have more oversight and influence of library management and report back to council in the community. At that time, the council and with community input, the council shall decide how to proceed. I think it's, it's at that point where we really need to determine what we can do and have more influence all the way from customer service and responses to inquiries to, you know, a review of what material's offered and how that's made available.
I'll second it.
I'll second that motion too.
Mayor, can I ask?
Just, just keep this as short as you can.
Just want to ask, because maybe we can amend that to? Just want to ask, because maybe we can amend that to reaching out to the library district and start working now as opposed to waiting. Because the idea that, when questioned and being told, this is going to set up until the process is, is complete, it's, it's kind of shameful to say, instead of a simple answer, let's take the book down meanwhile, and, you know. I think meanwhile, we go through the process, if we can, if the city can reach out to the library and ask them to be more open and understanding of the concerns and appropriately respond.
I would accept that for an amendment, but maybe that work can be carried out by a subcommittee of city council, you know, where we're at with our staffing and many changes, it's, it's going to be challenging to get that done in a timely fashion. So if I can volunteer myself, and if the others would support that, then, or be on the subcommittee, then we'll move on that.
Just, just one more itty bitty little concern I wanted to mention that you might want to consider if we're going to be able to make some changes. Like I said, laws about obscenity are different in the library system, and so people can actively view pornography on any of the computers there within eyesight of minors. This has already happened. The computers are not in a different area, there's people using laptops in the little children's area all the time. These are public computers for the protective, protection of free speech. People are allowed to look at whatever they want. I would really love it if you guys would consider helping us with that, so that our kids don't have to be exposed to anything like that. Because in that situation, the person looking at the content would be more protected than the child that just saw something. So just a little tiny thing.
Well, and we're not, we're not making a list of things to address this evening, I'm just proposing to find out what we're capable of doing, and I would hope that your voice would continue to be part of the conversation over time.
The conversation will start, but now, already has. Thank you very much. There's a motion on the floor, amend it, amend it, amend it, and second it.
Did you second that amendment?
Yeah, seconded everything. All in favor of the amendment and the proposal? We just go on the proposal. Are all in favor, or do you say aye?
I'm, I'm working on that.
I couldn't keep up with it, I knew what it was, but I, I don't remember things that long.
I couldn't repeat it either, it wasn't written down.
Are we, are we taking a public comment here? I don't know how to raise my hand.
Are we taking a public comment for your presentation?
Yeah, we're, we're just addressing this one issue of the books.
That's one of the issues I want to talk about.
Just one moment, let's get this business done.
So are you going to take public comment for just a presentation, or is that going to wait till public comment?
I think we've covered this particular topic. There'll be other things that the public may want to talk about, but we'll do that under the right place on the agenda.
Okay, same with this one.
Otherwise, we lose control of the decision.
Okay, let me see if I've captured our thoughts here. So I made a motion that to support local control of our community, our city staff review the contracts with the library, and request legal review to determine the ability of local citizens to have more oversight and influence on library management, and report back to the council in the community. At that time, the council with community input shall decide how to proceed. And during that time, a council subcommittee shall contact Fort Vancouver Library to work on increasing local involvement of the library management.
Have they been moved and seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous, okay. That will, that will give us a work plan to start, and that's-
I was going to say, that's a start. It's definitely a start.
It should be a committee of three.
Okay.
You, I, and, thank you, over.
I'll beat you to go. Dave, if you want to be, you've got more time. By all means, I yell to the gentleman.
Is it Dave or?
On with the beach.
Dave, is it you, or is it going to be Phil?
Dave, you were feeling going to be on that?
I'll take it.
And then you're going to?
Well, I'll draft a letter, circulate it, and we'll work on it.
Well, you're still going to, oh, resource ODA in regards to this?
The public will be able to participate in that committee, yes.
I think, I think that finding out where we stand with our ability to have influence, and then maybe citizen committee and the council-
I, I don't know if it should be the city as much as helping the-
But it should be public forum, it should be the public.
It needs to be that.
Maybe, some maybe, whatever, it should be open to the public.
You know, if I could just bring up one small thing, just, you know, thinking about it, I'm not going to defend any of this, these comics or anything, I'm not going to defend any one thing, but it's a slippery slope.
Yes, it is.
You know, if, if we, if you make it so that anybody can just walk into a library, point out anything that's offensive or blasphemous or whatever, and say, I want that pulled off the shelf right now, and that's how it works, so the library, it's a, you know, I, I totally understand, this is garbage, I get it, but Matt, you got to be careful when it comes to liberty, it's a, I'll be done in just a second, you know.
It's a double standard that benefits the left exclusively.
Well, I'm not left or right, I, I just, I just, I just see history, you know what I mean? There, there's history that, that we can look to, that not only history, I mean, that is how it works in some places, you know. I have Sharia law, you can-
The people who are looking first-
Please don't interrupt.
Point of order, hold on.
Are you going to come up here to talk?
Wait, wait, hold on, council members talking right now.
You're being recognized after-
Is there a people, is there a limit on people talking?
Yeah, we're trying to, to bring this to an end-
That's what I was told.
-with the action.
Oh, that's at the end.
I mean, I, I think it's great to, the motion that Lauren made and further discussions and stuff, but, hey, it's real easy to jump on a bandwagon and, you know, and say, oh, I see this example and it's an awful comic, or whatever it is. And it's real easy to jump on a bandwagon and say, yeah, we should be able as citizens or parents or what have you, to be able to go into a library and say, eh, offensive, you know, that's what they, that's what they did to stuff like The Catcher in the Rye, To Kill a Mockingbird, 1984.
Amelia Shelley doesn't allow any light in materials in there. It is all radical left wing.
I can't speak to anything in particular, I myself haven't even been in a library in years, but I'm just saying, as an overall general, sometimes you have to take a step back and think about what I brought up. I mean-
I think you make a great point, Dave, and we're kind of getting to more information what we can and can't do, and if we can bring that local influence and control in, then the community has a big responsibility, and I hope we see people come forward to help us manage that.
And that's why I made the comment, general comment, Dave, traditional values and morals. You can get history to death if you want.
I mean, hey, there might be religious materials in there that are offensive to my religion, but this, and I'm not going to want to look at their, at that religious material, but am I going to say, nobody else can either? You know what I mean?
Yeah, this, this is going to take legal advice to work our way through.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
It's going to depend on the public's involvement to support this.
May I speak to Dave's comment?
Yes.
Yeah. I think we got him also trying, he's been trying to comment.
Okay, I'll, I'll yell to him.
I'll get yourself into a topic.
Okay. Nicole, we're already in the middle of the conversation. Rick, did you want to have a comment?
Yes, I, you know what, this is Rick Landy, and I, and I have a comment, and I, and I say, Bravo, Dave, this is an extremely slippery slope. Who, who sits on a council and says, this is offensive or this is not offensive?
Fort Vancouver does. Fort Vancouver Library does, from our town.
Let's keep it to one person talking at a time, person.
It's worked out well. In addition to that, I, I saw the video that was posted, this was in the interac, I think, or the post of the video. I watched the interaction with the librarian, and I thought that Tara did a terrific job. She was very calm, she never got hurt, she said, here's the process, here's what I need you to do. She was yelled at, she was, it was not, it wasn't this-
By the way, my husband used to play this man.
... interaction that is being presented here. It was not well done, and I understand why the police were called.
We're both going to keep it the way it is.
That's all. One of the times, the major part of this, I want to say, Dave, thank you very much for standing up for the First Amendment. It's, it's important, and you can slide, you can sit there and censor the heck out of everything to meet some small group's ideal of what's terrific, and it's not good. It's not good for our community, it's not good for broader thought, and that's all that's good.
Okay, any other comments you would want to?
Mike Todd. Yeah, Mike Todd, father of nine, we gave up on libraries 20 years ago. But Dave, are you, I understand you run a store, a shop?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so the end cap, right, that's prime space, right?
Yes, sir.
We put, I don't know, you don't have to tell me what you do, but let's say you're-
Toilet paper.
You're, okay, toilet paper, right? So you're going to put the Charmin, you're going to put the high profit stuff, you're the, so if you want to push the public on the end cap, right?
Sometimes.
No, but, no, is, is the end cap, is the end cap important to you strategically?
Yes.
It is, right? And to your point about censorship, on our side, we've been hearing this, this is, this is the banner that is pushing collectively these people out the door, right? And here's the thing, we're actually asking for a public discourse on these materials. The librarian, in the library board, or however that happens, that happens in the shadows. And the reality is, there is only so much space in a library, right? Just like there's only so much space in a store. And decisions have to be made based on what? Public demand. And so you have the public here today demanding that the products in our library, in our store, better reflect the values of the community. We're not, what's, what we're being accused of, it is happening, but it's not happening on our side. It's what's happening in the shadows collectively, and these agendas and everything else are being foisted upon us. The library doesn't have the right to destroy our culture, okay? I'm going to go around the room right now. Councilmember Johnson, are you okay with this material?
Absolutely not.
Mr. Jones, are you okay with this material?
With this material in front of me right here? Personally?
Yes.
No.
Are you okay with it? Mr., I'm sorry.
I think you know the answer to that.
Okay. Councilmember Casey, are you okay with this? Councilmember Holmer, are you okay with this?
Nope.
Mr., Councilmember Taveras, forgive me, yeah. Okay. And Councilmember Wong?
No, but I think we've already answered that, our vote on the motion.
Okay, no, I just, I just, I'm making the point and I'm rebutting that point, right, that we are having a process to shine light on what's in that library. And this is, this is just so typical, that what we are being accused of is actually happening by the other person, and I think I made that point. Thank you.
I said, I'm going to support Dave's point, like, it's a slippery slope either way. You know, you could run the spectrum to just put everything in there, or you could really bring it down tightly, and, you know, it'll be up to the community to be engaged and involved if we have the opportunity to do so, based on the findings of the council in court, so.
Mayor, may I make just one more addition to what I said before? I'm not accusing anybody of anything, but I did, I did look up some stuff, and maybe this can be looked into. Procedures and policies that are in place. Now, the, the procedures and policies in place were written by a library board of trustees who were appointed by county commissioners, elected county commissioners, so, and they do have regular public meetings. So that's, you know, that's, that's the forum, I think, to address stuff like that, is the county commissioners have appointed the people that you guys have issues with, from what I see, the library board of trustees are appointed by the county commissioners, and they have regular public meetings on the content at the library. Now, if I, if my information is incorrect and they don't have regular public meetings, that's just information I got off of their website, so.
And you're not going to find a whole lot of support in this, actually, this county, for our county commissioners. Do it the right way.
Let's keep it on track, just along with the books and that issue.
I'm Glenda Endri. We're not talking about what's right for us as adults, we're talking about what's right and wrong for children. Now, this material should not be exposed to a child. And the last time I looked it up, or I even heard it from our sheriff, pornography is still illegal. It's illegal to introduce, show, expose a child to this material. And so I'm looking at, at that level of what is legal and not legal. If I were to go into the school system right now and start talking this trash to a child, I would be arrested for exposing that child to harm. It should not be in our library, or it should be excluded from where the small children are going to be. Again, pornography is illegal. Thank you.
Thank you. I think this seems to be our last speaker, if possible.
Thank you for fitting me in. My name is Catherine Kramer. Some of you might recognize me, I worked for a number of years at Comprehensive Mental Health as a therapist. I'm a master's level social worker. I've worked in addictions, I've worked as a medical social worker. My last part of my career was as a supervisor, pardon me, for a large, a large area of Alaska, in CPS work as a supervisor. I've participated in investigations of child abuse, child sexual abuse, I've worked with the offenders, the parents, caregivers of children. My life has circled mainly around the safety for children. When this topic first came up and I heard, you know, that there were these interactions and these materials were there, the first thing that came to mind for me was grooming. These, any child exposed to this material is being groomed, is vulnerable, and is, is, is available then, in that vulnerability, to be perpetrated on. I was horrified. I think our community is better than that, and what has been discussed here proves it. Just because there are cultural pressures, popular political pressures, does not negate our responsibility as the adults in this community to care for the safety of children.
This is the last speaker.
My good pastor, 270 Old Stage Road.
What was your name on Saturday we're talking about?
My good pastor, yeah. So what we're looking at, I got to tell you right now, because I didn't know a lot about Amelia Shelley over the last couple of years and the board. And right now, there's people, good people down there working to get her out of that position, because she is so lethal to the family and kids. She promulgated the big drag queen story hour.
Tell everyone who she is, they don't know who she is.
She's, she's the head of the Fort Vancouver Regional Library System. She has five people that got everything she wanted, because she had a majority on that. There's people doing good work down there, hard work, over years, to change out the people in there to where they can get three to her two, and then she's gone, probably. But until that time, she's going to be as destructive as she can. I invited her tonight, so I'm not talking out of turn, she didn't show up, right? And she's not going to, because when people call her out, she doesn't like that. But I-
But I gotta tell you, you would have as much chance of defeating Amelia Shelley and all this big circuitous stuff that she can pull on you, as fighting a great white shark in open water. And that's not gonna happen. So, other than that, I would say that a political, don't be political, is itself a political statement.
Yes, sir.
This is all politics. So, the, I've answered some of my questions here, and I was gonna ask, does the council have legal authority, yes or no, over the local library? And as I understand it, yes, sort of, but not really. So, in Amelia Shelley's word, you don't, the world, you do not. And you're not gonna either, if she has anything to say about it. Invite her up and have her talk to people, right? Because I've talked to her by email for a long time. Now, I got, I finally pinned her down after many, many months, to say the word no, that she would try and bring Drag Queen Story Hour up to Goldendale Library. And she responded, "No, I have that on record." So we don't have to worry about that part of it, but we're gonna worry about the other hundred thousand things that she can throw or come up with out of her mind. So, the, so does the, does the board have legal authority to compel Amelia Shelley and the Fort Vancouver Regional Library to change their behavior?
I don't think we have that authority at all.
Then what are we doing here, right? So the fight is not here, because they've got it spread out, Amelia Shelley from Vancouver controls Goldendale, the content of the library. And the deal is this, is that we do not have, we are being forced by the state, the government, to participate in this type of stuff, because we are taxpayers. And our tax dollars go to pay for this stuff, for Amelia Shelley's whatever, and we are being forced to pay for that, but that's okay. They have a strict double standard. It's yes for us, it's no for you, that's what it is. So there's a thing called the law of non-contradiction, and it is possible, two things are possibly both true at the same time, even though they're opposites. And this stuff about, okay, well, we'll have, you know, 12-year-olds can have this, pornography is a deadly bacillus to everyone who consumes it.
Yes, sir.
I don't care if you're 40 or 80.
Yes, sir.
That stuff will destroy you.
Yes, sir.
And I can say that, because I've never looked up a site, if I wanted to look up dirty pictures, I'll have to go to the library up here to the school.
Yes, sir.
So, this is about, and I don't want to offend anyone, but we're offended all the time. Amelia Shelley's whole drive is about underrepresented populations, non-dominant populations. Part of that is the LGBT community. She lives and dies on this type of stuff. So that's where she is. She is a hardcore liberal, right? And if she comes up, she would bend her, and I'd be saying the same thing. So my question is this, have materials, and this has been answered, I think, have materials been examined and determined to be legal or illegal for consumption by kids?
This is public comment, it's not an operating query, council. And if you don't like what we've decided, if you don't like what we've decided, and the action we're trying to take to support the request from the community, just let us know if you would like us to withdraw that. I mean, we're doing our best here.
I'm saying, one of the things we should, we should be on is, are the materials, which obviously are illegal, because they pulled them back, and what should happen, because the prosecutor and attorney isn't here, for good reason, he should write a letter and pull all that material back. And then make a determination, is it legal or illegal? I gotta tell you, it's illegal, because kids are consuming it, because Amelia Shelley wants that. It's called child liberation. Yeah. So, who are the officials responsible for finding out if that stuff is legal? I know the chief of police is here, right? And Bob weighed in the other night, but the prosecuting attorney is...
We're already, we're already talking about what the motion we've made and what we voted on, we're gonna be looking into all this information, just so you know.
That's great, but I wanna caution people, it is not the responsibility to put this on the citizens. It is the responsibility of law enforcement officials to make the determination. It's not just our opinion, right? That they'll say, "Well, you know, it's the First Amendment, or we've all got a right to say this or that." No, it is on people, on people who are elected or appointed to different positions to make that determination. And that's what we need, I think. So I make, I make a suggestion, is we get all that material back up there, because I knew she was gonna do that. She was gonna take all that stuff off the shelf, and then it's all good, and then we'll work through the board. I gotta tell you, you don't know her, right? You just don't know her. So, the Fort Vancouver Board operates as a political arm for these people, and they're very, they'll admit it. So anyway, so the cops come, right? The cops come not to arrest people that don't deserve it, and that's what happened the other day, right? So, anyway, the, you know, they put the cops in a bind, now that blew back on, because all these people are here today. So, the, the Fort Vancouver Board, I'll be in a minute here, Fort Vancouver Board operates as a political arm, this includes the opinion of the local library. It is not up to her to make, give an opinion to a mom, her opinion that this is okay, when it is illegal. And that's what she did. So, anyway, the, will authorities act to view and determine the legality of the materials? That's where the cut comes, because they can't deal with that, because that puts them into a black, white, yes, no corner, that they just can't explain their way out of. So anyway, don't get hung up on age-appropriate stuff, like I say, 40-year-olds, 50-year-olds, 60-year-olds, they're shipwrecked on pornography. It's dope, right? So anyway, that's about it, I said, I guess, and I've said way too much, and but, but you don't compromise with people who know what they're doing if they're radical. You are gonna be out wearing a barrel out of the poker game, every time.
Thank you.
Briefly, I promise.
Thank you.
No editorializing, I just want to get these into the minutes. So the Fort Vancouver Regional Library Foundation is also supported by Columbia River Realty, Minutemen Press, Molina Healthcare, AMESA Media, The Columbian, Hilton, Rand Jewelers, Columbia Gorge Credit Union, Simply Time Catering, Kazoodles, I won't say that one, because I don't know it, PSF Services, Hapo Community Credit Union, and Banner Bank. Thank you.
I'm gonna move on to the next item on the agenda, because we have a lot to do tonight, and we're running out of time. I think as many as possible have had a good say. If you want to stay till we get to public comment at the end, we can go through this again, but I think everything's been made, and I think you have full agreement from this council, that this has to be addressed, period. I don't know that we're the right authority, but the county should be involved in this as well, but we'll work on that. Thank you, Ovid, very much. Appreciate everybody being here. We're gonna go one down to item, to department reports, we'll start with Jay Huntzaker.
I'm not in the report, I'm in other business, council business.
I guess, your other business is that item two, your council business? Has anyone thoroughly read that? Have you had a chance to read through the request? If I can interrupt.
For the vehicle?
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I make a motion to approve the request as written.
I'll second that.
Everybody understood what you ran up against on this project?
Okay, all right, all right.
Did you have any issues with that?
No.
Do we have a motion?
Yes.
Yes, one of the motion, and my last second. Or approval. And then all in favor?
Yep.
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
That passes, do you have?
That's G2.
And you didn't have necessarily a department report, Jay?
No, sir.
Okay.
And Doug's not on the line, so.
Okay, and Noah's not here.
And Noah's not here.
So we'll move on down to ordinances, and this is the council salary increase. That one, this is where I miss Larry, because he would be doing this. It's required to have an ordinance addressing this matter of increasing the salary for city council. There's an explanation of it, we can either act on this tonight, or we can move it to another, another meeting. But I think, if you understood it, then we would be approving this ordinance, so that it will increase the council member's salary from $100 to $200 per month. That's the change, it's something that hasn't been done for decades.
And one thing, comment, mayor, this doesn't take effect right away, it's gotta be after the election.
Yeah.
Really, right now, none of us are gonna benefit by it.
No, no, unless we're re-elected.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Based on the previous discussion, and the motion that we thought we already did this, and the need to bring other people and increase participation, and I think that this is approved.
Okay. It's been moved and taken to approve ordinance number 1514, to increase the council member's salary from $100 to $200 per month, and this is for its first reading, you'll be seeing us again. Very good, all in figure?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Okay, appreciate the, the great help moving us along.
Mayor?
Yes?
Before we move on? I have two questions, I have brought up two resolutions, and I missed that meeting, I showed up at the end of the meeting for the ordinance. Just wondering why they're not here, what was taking place at that ordinance meeting? There was one for life flight insurance for all employees, and also bidding fire services on vehicle accidents and such, and just wondering why they're not here.
I think it was just a matter of it did not get on the agenda, for one reason or another, but, but both of those were things the council heard and reacted to continue, so we'll have it at the March 7th, I think, it'll be the next council meeting.
Okay, and then, just on that same question, I know Larry's not here, Jay, have you guys have the, your officers, based on the union contract, have they received paperwork for getting life flight insurance coverage for them? Through the contract? Yeah.
It's not complete yet, so no, they have not.
The contract's not completely?
No, it still hasn't been signed, it's, I guess it's back in making Eddie Allen's hands.
The union side.
The union side, yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
Steve? That particular item that Phil was talking about, the life flight, all city employees.
Correct. And, I'm sorry, you weren't here at the last meeting?
No, I'm gonna catch up a little.
So, I only, I thought right for life insurance, life flight insurance to be covered for all city employees, we made some amendments through different things, but that left out a few employees, like our clerks here at, at the city, that are not under a union contract and things like that. It also, my proposal was also to include council members, and obviously that would follow the same suit as this previous one, where, not right now, but at the next election, just because the, the life of all those that work and make the city work and continue, is that important, that we should invest $60 towards those benefits to make sure that they're taken care of, and not incurring a $100,000 bill?
You can leave me out, I've already got it.
Well, I made a comment, mayor, you know, I think most fire departments have life flight for their volunteer department already, and they, most of them, we even paid, they paid for them, for their volunteers.
And our fire department does have that, the volunteers.
District seven?
No, city board.
Oh, so, okay, okay.
City board, no, does have that.
Okay, that's what I, I thought, yeah.
I have one question too, on another item that Phil had brought up, regarding Senate Bill 5555, certifications for dispatchers. You're a dispatcher, are you?
I am, yes.
I see some kind of conflict of interest here.
Well, I brought it up to the council awareness, that's what I had brought up, it's a Senate bill, there's no motion, so.
It hasn't been enacted to start with, so.
Yeah. I mean, we can bring things up, right? I didn't vote on it, the council didn't vote, or anything else like that.
Right, it was a discussion.
It just brought up for information.
Okay, we're gonna go on to report officers, and we'll start with Andy. Phil? Mylan?
I'm just ready for spring to get here.
Yeah, it was here, where'd it go?
Yeah.
Ellen?
I have nothing.
I just wanna express gratitude for Ovid, for bringing these concerns forward and using this venue, rather than other, other ways to address the issue, but I would like to ask city staff at some point in the near future, provide maybe a 3x5 card, or something at the back of the room, that kind of just explains the process, and so they understand how they can interact with councils, so that we can have good forum throughout the meeting, and conduct business appropriately.
And we may have a workshop, to help the public understand it, as well as the council.
Well, I, you know, I think it's hard to get folks to attend a workshop, like, you know, at least they have a job opportunity to see the rules and the process, and understand it, it just makes the communications flow more smoothly. So, something that's at the back of the room, for, you know, contentious meetings, they understand, people get excited.
We're not gonna have any more contentious meetings again. All the dirty pictures that showed up. Okay. Yes, Steve?
Nothing for me, thank you, mayor.
Steve?
I'll pass.
Okay. On mine, I have only one thing that, if you, I don't think it was in the, in the packet, it's a proclamation in support of the Red Cross, American Red Cross, the Cascade Spree and the Southwest Washington chapter, and this is just expressing support for the Red Cross in the month of March, it's a time when they promote that, and that's all of it, it's just that I'm doing it, it's not something that's to be approved, it's just a proclamation to put out for the city.
No, that's good, mayor, I think it's very good. Yeah, it is, it is in our packet.
Okay, with that, we'll go to public comment. Yes?
Is there a?
Okay, my name is Larry Hockter, I live here in Goldendale, and just, first of all, I want to make the point, I was not part of Steve's library group, and I've been on two city councils, and I was mayor of one of them, and I've been on the library board for 20 years. And I would like to caution, you guys get too involved with each other's board, you wouldn't like the library coming to the city and saying, "Hey, fill up those potholes in the street." I also was kind of concerned that they didn't like the books, but yet they checked them out, and then copied and distributed what they didn't like to other people. I kind of question how that made sense. But, main point is, I would like to see my city not try to control everybody else's...
We've kind of talked about the slippery slope, anything like this?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's just like, you know, fishermen shouldn't come to the city and want the NRCS not to promote conservation farming, so there can be more water running in the little cricket app, so they can have more fish, you know, that's not appropriate either.
That's all done via voluntary actions?
I know, it's somebody else, and it just, I thought that they should have went to the library board, not the city council, or the county court, or, I mean, county commissioners, or whoever else they... or whoever else they wanna think will listen to them.
Dave's information's good.
Yeah, yeah.
Larry, I invited these folks here tonight. I requested this issue.
And I think that's a little bit of conflict interest when you voted on it. That's my personal opinion from my, from my years of being on boards and being on city councils. I think you crossed the line there. And I think that was a conflict interest, but that's my opinion. Just like you had your opinion and found other people that shared it. So, just my thoughts.
Sir? Sir? I have a question.
Yes.
You served on council, you served on, are you a current member of the board? Of the library board?
No, that was when I lived in Oregon.
Would you share with us how you can get involved? Because I know there was talk about secret societies and groups making decisions at these boards. How do you become from just a public member to a board member? And how do you get involved in any board, including city council?
Okay, I think the library board, an opening came up, and I said, I'm interested, and they appointed me. The hospital board, I went to a few meetings, and an opening came up, and they appointed me. And then I was elected, I was elected at the, or I was appointed. I was a citizen representative, so I was appointed by the county court, and I was on that board for, I waited and got my twenty years in.
So basically, as any member of the public, you can join and be part of these boards to make decisions.
That's where they get board members. Just like you're a member of the public when you ran for city council, or you were appointed for city council. I believe it works the same way here as it does other locations. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? I have questions for Olga later about where you're from in Eastern Europe. I worked there twenty years, I'd love to know. Lot of great culture there. Yes? Three minutes?
Three minutes. I can say a lot in three minutes, but I'll keep it short. My name is Luke Throop. I'm here to support Olga, to support the community having this conversation. And I have, I've served on numerous boards myself. I've been a court-appointed special advocate for children. I was a football coach at the high school. And I was, I lost that position advocating for medical freedom, as a side note. What was brought up in the beginning of this meeting was, Steve, I think you used the word shotgun approach of how there's, there seems to be an assault on all sides. Subversive intent from within, oppressive intent from without. And I think it's difficult at times to connect all the dots and understand how does, say, LGBTQ rights, how does CRT, how does comprehensive sex ed fit into the political landscape of what's going on? How does that tie into medical tyranny? How does this all come together? Mr. Goodpastor had commented about the, you know, you can't have, don't underestimate, I guess would be the way to paraphrase what he said, don't underestimate the opposition. My encouragement in this moment, this evening, is that we take just a second to acknowledge that there is an organized opposition, that there is a common enemy. There is a movement afoot that has been in motion for decades, longer than I've been alive, and I'm sure many of you well know. Comes straight out of the Communist Manifesto, the intent to destroy, to separate parents and children, to destroy the fabric of society so that it can be rebuilt. This has been seeds that have been sown for a long time that are coming to fruition right now. And the telltale sign is losing control at the local level. When we can't make decisions as a community, we lose control. We forfeit our authority, our freedom to the state, to the federal, to the global government. That's what they're after, total control. And it's coming through so many different angles, but all of these angles are sowing the division that we would bicker and fight amongst ourselves. Meanwhile, the invisible hand is over here, you know, employing the strategies to solidify tyranny and ultimately steal our freedom forever. If we allow our children to be victimized by a progressive agenda, if we allow our local community to be corrupted by values that are incongruent with what we hold dear. And I understand, that's a full spectrum. It's a full spectrum. That's the beauty of freedom, is that you can be left, right, and in-between, and that's three minutes, isn't it?
Yeah.
But we can all come together. So I appreciate and I respect what you guys have done here tonight to have the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
I just have one last thing.
Real quick. It's a three minutes, or something?
I've already said so much. I know that this is gonna run off the rails with secret motives and free speech and all that. I just want to remind everybody what the library says themselves. It's the parent's job to do the parent's job in the library with the kids before the kids even come into the library. We're just trying to do our job. We're not trying to do the librarian's job, trying to do our job. Because in that library, I'm in charge of my kids, and I care about what's out for them. I'm allowed to say something, and I'm allowed to ask for something better in addition to be offered, sure. Have your section full of all that stuff, but can we also get some really great stuff? I want all of you, please take a walk through our library. See if anything inspires you, see if there's anything that catches your eye, see if there's anything that brings back a memory. I read that as a kid. I'm sorry to say, you might not see much of that. And so, even if there wasn't anything really, you know, inappropriate, in my opinion, there, if we didn't have good enough books, I'd be here saying, we need better books at our library, that's just it. My kids swim in books, we have so many books, we love books. Our community, this is, we could lose this at any moment, you know? So it's really not just about personal opinions or political agendas. I didn't tell you where my politics are. I didn't tell you where, if I go to church, if I don't. But I'm a parent, and I have kids, and I really want the library to just be like a great resource for us. I don't, I'm not trying to witch hunt at all. You can even forget all the garbage, and can we say, let's make it better? Can we get some buy-in from the local community? We don't have to focus on the things that divide us. There's a lot of things we can all agree on. We can agree there's a lot of really good things locally that we can glean from our community, find out what the interests are, what would edify, what would support the homeschoolers, what would support the public school, what would support, you know, maybe we can just integrate a little more and lift it up. That's not so bad, that's not so scary, we don't have to fight. But parents are told to do their job. Apparently, they want us to give our voice. And so we're gonna give it, and we're gonna do it peacefully, respectfully. This wasn't a collective group that all just, you know, got together specifically for tonight. People came, we didn't know what anyone was gonna say. This is individuals, but we have a common concern, and most of us are parents. So I just, I just really wanna be clear, fair, and square. And I wanna say, I have worked in public service where my values maybe didn't match exactly where I was, but when you sign up for public service, that's what that is. And you don't have to give everything up. I'm not saying you have to be a martyr to it, but that's part of the job description, and we're just asking for that to be noticed. Okay, thanks, guys.
Nice to meet you. If there's no other public comment, we're gonna go into executive session.
Is there any public comment online, on via Zoom?
I don't see any hands raised. Rickland Need is still in the line, but I don't know that he had more to say.
Nope, nobody raised their hand. Okay.
Steve?
Before we go into--
I have more to say, but I will keep it to myself.
Okay. Before we go into this executive session, Olga's received this. Confidential. The details, some of the details about this were on the street before our packets were in there, in our boxes. That's confidential. This is small town. Just want you to know, just want you to know. I heard about it by my own, myself, most of the details.
Oh, when you're done, Roger has his hand up for public comment. When you're done, Steve.
Anyway--
Just a second, Roger.
I've got a question. One question I've got is a-- Does a committee consider it a governing body?
It's a part of the process, that's--
Part of the process. You see, that's, I have serious reservations about how this process has been done. First of all, according to what I found here, committee was not appropriate, although I want to recognize the effort and time that the committee members have spent doing this. And I also want to recognize the value of committees. I think they're overused sometimes, but regardless. I fully, I felt this way from the beginning, that the full council should've been involved in this process all the way through. And that comes to statutes here. As far as, you know, it is accepted to evaluate the qualifications of an applicant for public employment.
In executive session.
In executive session. Now, does interview, it doesn't say interview, it just says evaluate the qualifications, but there were interviews conducted. Okay? Over here, it says, this is, this authority to evaluate applicants in closed session allows a governing body. That would be us, correct?
It's the opportunity you're about to get.
To discuss the qualifications of applicants, not to choose--
No, no.
--which one to hire, to the extent the governing body has any hiring authority. Although this subsection expressly mandates that final action hiring an applicant for employment be taken in open session.
Right.
Okay? This does not mean that a governing body may take preliminary votes in executive session that eliminate candidates from consideration. Now, we're going to, we're gonna go into this executive session. The decision has already been made. All that's gonna happen in this executive session is the remainder of the council is going to be asked for a ceremonial vote in our next open meeting on that committee's choice, decision.
You're gonna have a chance to question the person? Because that's, that's what we're gonna do, is--
All the candidates have been eliminated, we have nothing to discuss. There is--
They actually haven't been eliminated, though.
And that's the problem, is, is we have--
We're going to--
We want to evaluate those with the whole council tonight.
We're only gonna evaluate one person?
Yes. We, the process is to find the most qualified, we feel we've found that.
Well, now, I've already made a request for this documentation of the other applicants for us to review.
They were given, I felt they were--
No, has anybody received it?
Isn't there rules about discussing what we discussed in the executive session last time? That we can't be doing that?
Yeah.
What do you mean?
In the executive session, you're talking what we've talked about, so you shouldn't be talking about that in the public session.
I'm just requesting information. That I think is very relative and pertinent to this process.
It's gonna be discussed in the executive session, that's what we're trying to get to.
Do you have the city ordinance on what's required to hire a manager, city manager? Should you read that?
Oh, what do you mean, what's required?
The process?
Well, I thought this outlined the process fairly well, unless the city has adopted something different for this.
What is that you're talking from?
It's in this nice little handbook that everybody got. You know, and that's why I say I have serious reservations because of this. I don't deny, I read this, I'm not denying that this person's qualifications are spot on. I would like to resolve this as soon as anybody. I really would. But I have reservations about the process.
You could've solved this a lot sooner by bringing this to the mayor or the chair of the council, to wait and bring this up in a, in a public meeting. Isn't it an appropriate way to handle it?
What could've, should've, I did in the last executive session, and it ended up in a brawl.
Lauren's talking about even before that. You should've come to us when we started this process and said there was issues.
I came in late on this, I was wholly privileged.
When did, when did we do the first interviews? When did we start going around about this? It was, it was--
At least two months ago.
Well, in first party January.
So in other words, my concerns are irrelevant.
No.
You have established the process, and by--
This is a council, and there are seven people on this council to vote. You have one, not the six.
Absolutely, absolutely.
But you keep doing this.
So point of order is that this is not on the agenda, there's an opportunity to amend the agenda. I guess we should move ahead with the executive session, and Steve definitely talk to the mayor, talk to the chair of the council, and get it on the agenda for discussion.
Yeah.
We do have one more public comment from Roger Nichols before we go--
Yeah, Roger wants to make a comment.
Roger?
I'm a little sorry to ask this, but my question as a reporter is, do you anticipate making an open decision at the conclusion of this executive session? In this case, I need to hang around, or can I go write the story up?
We don't make the decision in executive session, and it will be, I'll be explaining my intent on the appointment to them, but not any action. And then at the March seventh meeting, everything will be presented, the contract will be presented, and it'll be an open session, and it'll be decided by the council, not by the committee. That's where we are.
I understand, thank you.
Thank you, Roger. With that, I think we need to begin the executive session, and--
Could I respectfully request to leave? You're wasting my time, that's why I feel, you're wasting all four of ours' time.
You're wrong, you're dead wrong.
You're totally wrong, Steve.
You don't feel like you have the ability to carry out the position that you should get up and leave?
So how, how long will be the executive session? I think that's the next thing on the--
We'll begin at thirty minutes.
Thirty minutes, okay.
Thirty minutes?
Thirty minutes, I can handle it for thirty.
Yeah, it's not gonna be long, we've already gotten plenty of--
Okay.
Okay, we're gonna clear the room.
So we'll be at thirty minutes, starting in two minutes?
Yeah, that'll be good.
Anybody needs to take a break?
Yep.
Please do so. Thanks for coming on by here.